I'm going to drop that for a second so I can. I ended up with two computers, one with everything all set to use for tonight. And the other one to log in on. And. So first thing I want to do is appoint a secretary. Lee, are you willing?
I was actually gonna ask Steve to do it tonight.
Sure, I'll do it. Just walk me through it. Just let me know.
Brad, I was about to volunteer and the attachment will not open in my iPad, so.
Yeah, all kinds of weird stuff's going on here. Steve, are you okay?
Yes, yes, I am. I'm connected. I have twenty-two Harborview Avenue. Is that the attachment you're referring to?
Yeah.
Have it with me.
But let me, let me start out with getting some of the basics out and then we'll go. And I'll pull zoom back up. We typically start a meeting by going through some language that is required. And I want to do that real quickly and I'm going to summarize. When we do meetings on Zoom, you need to know that there's a link that you can go to that'll lead you on to look at any of the documents and find out how to get into a meeting. And that is a link. NorwalkCT, I'll run together, dot gov forward slash meetings. And you'll find instructions when you go there. The question is, how do you participate? Will you raise your hand, which is a feature within Zoom? We see that you raised your hand. We call on you. When do we do that? There's three phases to an application. We hear one application at a time. The first phase, the applicant presents their request and provides information about it to the board and the board can question the applicant. The second phase, we ask the public to participate by first asking for those who support the applicant's application and then those that oppose the applicant's application. If there are neither, then we'll just proceed. If there is somebody that's come in and raised a question of some kind, whether they object in total or in part, or just want more information, then we let the applicant come back and answer those questions or counter objections made by some of the public. That's it. That's how it works. And then at the end, which tonight, since there's one application, that's it. We go through the applications and treat them one by one and vote on. With that said, I think we can begin. So with the twenty-five oh three twenty oh one, Kevin Rath and Stephen, you're on.
Sure. So twenty-five oh three two zero dash oh one, Kevin Rath, variance to allow elevating existing rear deck and adding access stairs to grade within twenty-five feet of the mean high tide. Deck proposed seventeen feet from mean high tide per Article six point nine point five point D point one in zone C D one S with coastal aerial management overlay. Property is located at twenty-two Harborview Avenue, District five, block eighty-five C, lot twenty-two. Request, the applicant seeks variance to allow raising an existing deck within twenty-five feet of mean high tide. A set of stairs from the deck to grade are proposed. The deck is attached to the house that will be elevated and make flood compliant. No additional variances are needed for the dwelling. The background, the house was constructed around nineteen thirty. The house was damaged by flooding and permits were issued in two thousand and twelve to repair that damage. The deck has existed for many years. Analysis and findings. The new regulations include an additional buffer protection of coastal resources, Article six nine five D one. All new construction, substantial improvement and repair to structure that have sustained substantial damage shall be located at least twenty-five feet landward of the reach of mean high tide. The existing deck is seventeen feet from the mean high tide. As such, staff cannot issue a zoning permit to raise the deck and add stairs unless a variance is granted. The proposal requires a separate coastal site plan review by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Please find attached coastal site plan review memo from Amelia Williams. Amelia indicates the activity is exempt from review by the Planning and Zoning Commission. However, she notes it is not recommended to allow significant increase of living space in flood-prone areas. This application requires two separate decision motions. One, a variance request, which must include a hardship declaration. And two, coastal site plan review, which must include declaration that the proposal is or is not consistent with the CCMA goals and policies and will or will not adversely impact any coastal resources. Then there's an attachment.
Thank you. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Kevin, are you going to speak?
I'm here.
Okay. You can go ahead and begin your presentation.
Go ahead. Daddy, you want to talk it?
Okay. Good evening and thank you for your time and consideration as a matter. I have been a resident of Harvard view for over forty years. My son is thirty-plus years. We've experienced many small floods and several major floods over the years. The variance before you tonight is so my son can lift his house to make it flood compliant. He's lifting the existing structure with no expansion of the footprint. The house was built in nineteen thirties and the issue is the rear waterfront deck, as he explained in the variance, it's seventeen feet in lieu of the newly passed requirement of twenty-five feet from the high tide line. The deck also provides a secondary egress to the house, which if we're not allowed to raise the deck and have the stairs there, we would not have a secondary egress to the house, which could result in a safety issue in the future. I understand there's an amendment before the zoning commission to either grandfather this clause or allow existing structures to be elevated and be grandfathered exempt from this. If this requirement is not modified, it will have an adverse effect on many properties in Harvard view and the surrounding communities. I've submitted letters from seven of my neighbors who are with the hundred-foot zone around the house that would be potentially affected by this in my application and all of them support it. I thank you for your time. It will have no difference to any of my neighbors or view or anything in that respect. It's just lifting the existing structure straight up. And then, of course, we have to build stairs down, which would be more than the would, which be at least the twenty-five foot buffer zone. So only the corner of the deck is within the seventeen feet as opposed to twenty-five feet. So and lifting the existing structure should have no adverse effect on the coastal as there's a concrete sea wall there. It's nothing going to affect anything in that nature. Phil, if you have any questions, please.
Do you have a site plan we can look at?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, I'm gonna share it now.
Okay.
Give me just a second, sorry. Are we seeing survey?
Yep. There it is. You can see in the, you know, with the rear deck now, the patio, which is on the ground will not be, that'll be eliminated, but it's that one corner of the deck where the issue is right there, right where this cursor is now. That's seventeen feet in lieu of the twenty-five feet, just one corner.
Are you going to be lifting the existing deck or are you going to demolish it and build a new deck?
We're gonna lift the existing deck.
Has it been checked out structurally?
The architects looked at it and he deems it liftable. Obviously, we're gonna have a new foundation, I mean, new peers. You know, there'll be no, all the peers won't be breakaway, but in between them will be anything breakaway, but I think it'll be open underneath the deck.
Continuing my stream of thought, what is your hardship?
The hardship is one for a secondary egress to the house. Otherwise, there's only one set of stairs, the inner out. So that is the major hardship also.
Okay, I'm gonna stop you right there. I disagree because every window in bedrooms has to be an egress window.
Sure, I'm talking about for practical sense. Yes, we climb out.
Okay, well, we're, we're not talking just practical here. We're talking realistic hardships. And that's what I wanted to know.
Well, in realistic hardships, when you live on the water, having a rear deck is, I know maybe legally not a hardship, but living on the water, not having a deck on the back to enjoy it, you know, while you're paying significant taxes for that is with having to eliminate it, in my opinion, is a hardship. I don't know if that fits your criteria, but that's the hardship. In other words, to have a house on the water without a deck where you can enjoy it in the summertime is, I know it doesn't sound. I don't know. It's not a.
Would you consider cutting a corner off the deck if need be?
If need be, but you'd have to go back seventeen to twenty-five is seven feet. So you'd end up in that quarter, two feet for a deck. So it really wouldn't be practical. It'd be, you know, you'd have a triangle deck. Would it be kind of unusable?
Well, I'm, I'm looking to see if there are any realistic, practical solutions that don't involve a variance. That is our job.
Right. No, I'd like to find that too.
Or hold on a second, or is some middle ground that we can reach?
Let me, you might, you're sharing, right?
I'm sharing. Yeah. What do you need, Ben?
You went zooming in a little bit on the deck. I have a question about the the site plan.
Yeah.
You didn't bring your magnifying glass.
I, I have it up on my other screen. I just wanna, I guess, zoom it in for the sake of asking this question.
I can barely make it out.
Just click the little plus next to the forty-two percent up there. It should go up. Zoom in a little bit.
Oops, hang on one second.
So the current decks.
You're almost there. It's in the middle of the top.
Inches, like a couple inches.
I've got my zoom bar covering it, so I gotta move that. There we go.
The depth of the current deck is about eleven feet, give or take an inch?
Yes.
Roughly, yeah.
So the difference between seventeen and twenty-five is eight. So eleven minus.
You have a three foot.
Yeah. That's not gonna work out. We need to figure out though, some compromise between just blowing off the requirement and meeting it at least halfway.
I have a question. I have a question. Andy and Lee, the current deck where it stands now, the applicant is looking to elevate that deck, correct? By how many feet?
Approximately seven feet to make it up to the seventeen-foot flood zone, the new current regulations.
So and, and the city did not ask you to do this. This is on your own accord, correct?
Well, we're trying to become flood compliant. What's gonna happen?
So, so, so if I could just finish, so, so the applicant is looking to elevate the deck, Lee and Andy, is there, if they're looking to elevate the deck by seven feet, could that be the compromise since they're looking to elevate it to being compliant?
Well, it has to be elevated to be compliant.
I know, but based on the applicant looking to elevate it by seven feet, could that be the compromise?
If I'm not mistaken, you're saying, can that be the hardship?
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I'm trying to say.
We're talking a distance from the waterline.
Yeah, it's not gonna distance, but, but he's looking to elevate it. He's looking to elevate it, elevate the deck, which would be in compliant currently is not.
I understand. So you're adding more, you're using a triangle and you're adding forty-two more.
Exactly.
There you go. Thank you.
Just a thought.
I think if, if you, from this house down, all the way down Harborview, the houses get closer to the sea wall. You're gonna have a number of houses, probably ten to twelve houses. If they get any damage, they're gonna have to tear up.
Yes, so, yes, so with that being said, so with that being said, Lee, could that be the, the, the compromise if that's?
But not for me.
Okay.
I, you know, there, there's a reason FEMA has changed the regulation. And you know,
Well, I would say if this property was built in the eighties, this was built in the thirties, so there was some changes, you know, after that, the property was built. I think it was nineteen thirty, correct?
Nineteen thirty.
Yes. You know, the way I'm looking at it is the deck is being lifted. It could be moved further to the left-hand side of the screen to accomplish most of the setback problem.
Is there a window there? Is there a window on that left side?
Sure, there are windows, but it's an interesting thought, Lee, I guess. It's up to the applicant.
Yeah.
You would still end up with a quarter, about a third of the deck noncompliant. I'm trying to figure it out here.
I'm trying to show you the twenty-five.
Well, I, I wish we had a survey that had a twenty-five foot line on it.
Well, right there, you have a twenty-six foot line right there at the corner.
Yes.
So moving it over, you'll get virtually nothing.
Well, and if the deck were moved further to the left, after you lift it, it could be more compliant.
You're still gonna have a tiny deck because you gotta, you can only move it over six feet to the side yard setback. And looking at that twenty-six foot line where it is, if you take that parallel across, you're gonna have a little trapezoid deck. It's gonna be probably three feet by seven feet.
Well, I, I wish, you know, your architect had sketched something that we could look at.
Yeah, he has the deck. We have the deck as we proposed with the stairs. It's the existing deck going straight up.
And where are the stairs going? You haven't shown us that drawing.
I'll show you the plan. Give me just a second, okay?
Yeah, it's on the right as you're looking at this.
There's another, there's the stairs, yes.
And that makes it even more, even less compliant by adding the stair to the right-hand side of the deck.
Well, where else are you gonna put it?
You can put it on the left-hand side.
You don't have enough room till you'll hit the setback. You'll be encroaching in the twenty-five foot line and you have six feet wide to get down. And then till you hit the setback, then we'd have to get a variance for the side yard. This is the least intrusive. There's no property next to it. There's another line.
So Steve, could you just read the two variances that are needed here?
Sure, give me one sec. The two, it's the variance request, which must include a hardship declaration and a coastal site plan review, which must include declaration that the proposal is or is not consistent with CCMA goals and policies and will or will not adversely impact any coastal resources, coastal resources.
Is, is that, I didn't quite recall what one of the coastal bodies had said that there was no need for review. Is that the same or am I off target here?
Yes.
That, that, so for this part two, they're the folks that are saying they don't need to review this.
No, they, they have to go to the P and Z commission.
They do, okay.
And they need our approval to proceed on their end.
Right.
Hey Tammy, with all your diagrams that the applicant provided, can we get a picture of where the deck is relative to the waterline?
Well, it's, it's, the deck is the exact same split space.
It's not moving.
As, as on the survey. Maybe that's it.
I have the, if you want to pull up the Google Earth, you can see the satellite image of where it sits.
But go back to the survey?
I need the dimension so we can figure out if there's something we can approve. There we go. That's better. Now make it bigger. So we're looking at the deck and the waterline.
Zoom out or zoom in?
Zoom in.
I'm gonna zoom in a little bit. That's good. Stop, stop. And now go down just a tad. So we're getting the bit of the house, the deck and the waterline. Good.
Perfect. So if you look at that, if you look at the twenty-six foot line, go a foot back from that and go straight across parallel to the sea wall, you can't, you gotta cut off the whole deck. I think you're gonna find, especially people down the way.
Yeah.
They're not gonna lift their houses if they can't keep their decks and things like that. They won't do it. I'd be honest with you, if we can't lift the deck, we're not gonna lift the house, not gonna do it. And then you're gonna get more and more people not becoming flood compliant. This new regulation, I don't believe it's a FEMA regulation. I think it's a city in Norwalk regulation because they've always had, they've already had an application to adopt a grandfather or to exempt people who are already within, not new construction, just existing homes to lift them. Which they voted.
Sorry, let me clarify that. So it is a, so it is a state deep recommendation for the twenty-five feet, which we incorporated into, you know, FEMA has very base model language, which does, it basically says nothing, obviously, into the, into the water, right? And so this keeps it, ensures there's a buffer and that was recommended by the state. So we did adopt that in the February rewrite. And Tim is also correct that, yes, we are, because in reviewing this particular application, seeing the issue here and we are, it was introduced, it's not yet part of the public hearing for planning and zoning commission, but they were given a memo to review at the meeting that they held last night and seemed receptive and understanding. It doesn't mean it will be approved or it may be modified. Basically allowing existing structure to be raised in place as long as mass, massing is an increase. But again, we don't know that that will get approved. So staff recommended that Tim go ahead and, you know, move forward with his variance application.
What do you mean?
The, the proposed amendment?
Yeah, yeah, right. The proposed amendment, their staff, zoning commission staff said, let's move forward with it, i.e. they're gonna deal with it and possibly adopt something.
Possibly, yes, but it's not guaranteed. That's why.
We want to move forward with these plans. I mean, it's, we're, you know, it's, I'm losing a deck, but if you go down the road, you'll lose the back of a house. You know, there's.
That's not my concern. Is there a way that we could delay this and see what the zoning commission provide us?
If the, if everything goes in, you know, timeline wise, I believe it'll be April second before it's introduced for public hearing. I don't know that it would be, it would not be voted on then, so.
Well, I wouldn't mind some guidance out of the commission as to what they think is an absolute limit. I think we could develop a variance that would provide some of the deck, but it would be trapezoidal. You're absolutely.
Let me clarify, if the proposed amendment goes through, that would obviate the need for the variance.
Yeah.
I believe. And so, but I, I don't, I don't know that it's going to be approved. That's, I don't have full confidence.
Well, the twenty-five foot thing is difficult and yes, if you don't amend, change your structure, your grandfather, then you can sit there with your deck. If you do change the structure, you can't sit there with your deck, period. And that could be even mean that the result of flood, flood damage, when you go to repair, you're kind of caught at that point in time. So I would like to see if we can get some more guidance out of zoning itself, at least the staff, and then we could figure out how to approach the limit and still provide a deck. And yes, it'd be trapezoidal.
I would prefer you either to deny the variance or not approve it. I don't really want to wait till April because then they're gonna have a sixty day after they potentially approve it and move forward. And I've got people lined up to raise the house. If you're not gonna improve it, approve the variance, please just let me know and then we'll drop all the plans.
Well, we could make it so that you could resubmit without having to pay again.
Well, I, once we lift the, we're gonna, if we can't have the deck, if you can't have any deck and you're gonna make us have a little trapezoid deck, not gonna happen. So we're not gonna lift the house. So we'll just move on. And then maybe a year from now or two years from now when you approve it, when other people down the Rhine all have to get variances or if a storm comes.
We have people down the line here who have trapezoid decks because they couldn't meet the zoning requirement.
Well, this is an existing deck. I'm just saying, if a storm hits Harborview and then you come back to people there and say you can't rebuild your house because of this twenty-five feet and they have to tear ten feet off their house, you're gonna have a big issue.
So Con, Conrad doctrine, or what we now call one point, it's vertical expansion adopted into the code would typically allow that, except for this new restriction of the distance to the mean high tide. So they're somewhat in conflict there.
I'm willing to find some compromise position, but if we can't be a compromise position, then I'm also willing to deny it, but not force you to have to pay again to resubmit.
Well, we will bother, but thank you. I appreciate that.
Cause each of the things that we've done that sometimes ended up with an odd shaped deck, we're us trying to work with the applicant to get a deck.
And those are for existing structures?
See, this is a new, this is a new regulation you guys put in in February a year ago.
No, it's a new, you're right.
So it's something everybody else who's lifted their homes, you could lift an existing home and have no loss of a footprint. We're not trying to add anything on the footprint. We're lifting existing structure just like it is. And I believe it should be allowed, but, and obviously it's gonna be a real problem down the road for other people if this requirement's kept intact. I understand for new construction, hundred percent. But for an existing structure, I think it's a definite hardship and people aren't gonna lift their houses.
Well, our problem is that if we were to approve this.
Yes.
We could be facing two hundred other residents asking to raise their decks in the same manner that violate this regulation and we can't open that door.
Okay.
The house immediately, as we look at the back of your house and looking out toward the water. If you go to your left, you have a neighbor. If you go to your right, you have the clubhouse. Okay, one at a time. Kevin, if you go to the left here, looking back toward the water, is, you have a house and what do they have in their backyard or is that their building that's right up close to you or what?
Yeah, that's their house. The house is right there. This is my yard to the right, you'll see. And then that's the clubhouse to the, on the other side.
Okay, because I was wondering if you, we could shift the deck left and give a variance for going into the setback.
Well, you're saying left, left is my property next door.
Yeah, towards his house, towards twenty Harborview. So there.
You guys are next door to each other.
Yeah.
Correct.
Well, that's about it in terms of me figuring how you could do a trapezoid. We could lessen the distance that you have to cut to and then move it to the left and then you end up with a trapezoid, but it'd be a workable trapezoid as the.
I, I would be willing to, to consider a side yard variance rather than this other variance being.
You're gonna have to do both to some degree. That's what I said.
If you look where the twenty-five feet, if you follow parallel to the sea.
I've already done that, yes.
So there's no, there's no room. There's no room. Look at it. Make a line across there. I mean, if you're gonna be strict to your rules, there's no room.
Well, it would be strict to the rules, but I'm not sure that, that's why I'm saying, if we delayed it and then let's say we got a twenty-foot number out of the zoning commission. Well, I think twenty foot would probably work for you. That gives you five more feet. You shift it to the left, somewhat trapezoidal, but it'll definitely be a big enough deck. You're not gonna keep the existing deck. If you think you are, you're not.
Okay, well, I don't know.
It's, um, yeah, I mean, so when would be a good time for us to reapply if this was the case, if we're gonna leave?
Really approve the whole variances, the whole new amendment. So in other words.
We'd ask our staff to try to get it expedited through zoning and Tavies our staff. And so that they are aware that we've got one hanging up in the air that we need to proceed on and we need to know where they're going with this twenty-five foot thing. So it isn't that we just leave you hanging. We would be pressing to get it done, but there's still a timing issue because, you know, you gotta go through posting in the newspaper before the meeting and all that.
I know that. And so we've already lined up somebody to lift the house, so I'd rather just drop the whole project. So.
So on that point, I just wanted, if it's denied, what impact does that have on coming back a year from now or?
Some month or two from now.
Sorry?
So you could deny without prejudice?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yes.
Right. That just helps them come back easily and then not have any fees to come back.
It's really, you know, you guys try to encourage us to lift our houses to make them flood compliant and. and then you make us jump through hurdles to do it. It's really disappointing. It really is. I mean, I always had plans to lift my house next door and I, I really, I'm gonna have second thoughts about doing that.
Well, we have regulations that we have.
My deck is compliant, it's twenty six feet, so I don't have to come back to you guys for that. But I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna do it. So anyways, um, so I would ju, prefer you just deny the variance. Appreciate that. Unless you, some of you want to vote for it, but I think cuz it's gonna be compliant up in the air, it's not really gonna be a flood issue. If you take a line this way, it's twenty five feet, but you don't like that. So I just think, uh, people are gonna hear about this, especially in Harborview, and they're gonna be very concerned about that. I know you have your rules. It's not a FEMA rule, but it's a state rule. And it's new thing, and there's a lot of people are gonna be affected by it, and it's gonna have an adverse effect on property values, even on sales. People are gonna say, well, if my house is damaged, I can't do anything to it. It's kind of ridiculous. I really think, especially down the road, down the line in Harborview, people are right up on the seawall. They're gonna literally, if they follow your rules, they're gonna have to tear off ten feet of their house. You know?
Well, they've had to do something like that. If, I've been to Harborview in two major floods and helped out for about a week each time, wasted water. So I'm familiar with some of the problems there, but I know that we had to do a lot of work to get the houses up, so all the systems in the house weren't ruined by the next flood, um.
A lot of them who've been, who've been raised now would not be able to have been raised. I could look at forty one Harborview, sixty one Harborview, they couldn't have been raised with this new thing. They couldn't have been done cuz they're well within the twenty five feet, yet they're all up. Um, and then someone wouldn't, uh, if you go to sell your house, I know one that was just sold, if these people knew this, it would, people wouldn't buy them, period.
Unfortunately, we are not allowed to consider cost. When we look at.
I'm not talking about cost, I'm not talking about cost at all. I'm talking about people would have to tear down ten feet of their house.
That's cost.
That's a hardship. I mean, that, you, you're gonna lose.
That's a hardship. No, I agree with you. It's a hardship.
That would be a hardship. We have, our board has always worked with Harborview residents because we understand the problem.
Well, it doesn't sound like it tonight. Doesn't sound like you understand this at all.
The deck has been there for years and years.
Forty years.
We're gonna lose it.
Yeah, and people aren't gonna live on the water if they can't have a deck. It's ridiculous.
I just, like, every other house.
A rock and a hard place. If, if we grandfather something.
It already sounds like people are gonna change the rule.
Could only minor change, uh, then it gets grandfathered and you don't have to change a thing if you don't want to. You make major changes to your home, then you're not grandfathered, then you have to live by what is the current code. If the current code, which is brand new, is a real problem for the community, then we have to ask the zoning commission to take another look at it. That's gonna take a month or two for sure.
So I think, I, I think you guys, and I've talked to the mayor about this too. I think the guys would be, I envision them changing this, at least grandfathering, no new construction, but grandfather, people want to exist, lift an existing house. If they find out you're gonna lift your house, but oh, you gotta lose your deck on the back, or you gotta lose ten feet of your house, who is gonna lift their house? And then when that house comes up for sale, it'll be common knowledge that you can't do anything to this and potentially have to tear it down. The property value is gonna drop like a rock, and I know you guys don't care about building costs, things like that, but it'll have an adverse effect.
And how's it gonna get, and how's it gonna get wiped out by the next Sandy?
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna have another storm.
And your focus should be with planning and zoning.
Well, they sent us to you. All we want to do is lift our house.
No, I accept that.
That's it.
But I need, I need you guys to come up with a compromise, um, the size and location of the deck, and then we have to see if we can accomplish that.
And I would point out that anybody, we have one attendee, I don't know if they wanted to speak for this item or if they're just viewing, but um during the public hearing for the, I think what Lee was maybe alluding to was that, that you could give those comments to the planning and zoning commission when they go to look at this uh amendment for.
We had signed letters from all of our neighbors saying they approve of this. They liked the idea. I know we have a neighbor on the call right now listening. Um, uh, we went to everybody, everybody. I'm president of the board here. I've made a notice to my entire community that I was doing this. There, and there, and I've let them know that the only reason I was doing this is because it's this new rule, and everyone's like, crazy, I'll write a letter for you. So I, it's just like, you, you, I'm, I'm losing part of what I bought. And I don't, it just doesn't feel fair when every other house around me has been able to go up without cause.
Well, typically, when something bites you hard, I'll, I can go a couple of feet, but I can't do eight feet. So we need, gotta figure out how to move the deck or redesign the shape of the deck or both, or maybe become more liberal in the interpretation of this twenty five foot. I don't think we're gonna get there tonight cuz I don't think you're prepared to make a design change to your deck. And I don't know the board can just willy nilly decide not to follow the new regulation, even though we don't particularly like it.
If staff suggests that the applicant asks for a continuation to the April seventeenth meeting, um, and maybe present new plans if the.
Give them that option. I think that's great. Yeah, I know he doesn't want to, and I, by he, I mean Tim, doesn't want to do that, but I think we're doing it anyway.
Well, are you saying knock off two feet, five feet, eight feet? What is it?
I, I'm willing always to go two inches, two feet, small changes, because I don't think that that matters. When you start getting up into five foot, ten foot, fifteen foot, depending on the property and what we're talking about, yeah, then I have a bit of an issue with that. It's kind of pushes past what I think ZBA should be doing. But we shouldn't be that narrow minded that we can't go a couple of feet. What I think you need is some sort of alternate plan for the deck, uh, and that'll be true of other people probably in Harborview, but I also want the zoning commission to take a look at this twenty five foot rule.
Can I, can I ask you a question? Let's say we drop the deck, just toss it, lift the house and come back later and say, can we add a deck on? Or is that, or am I gonna lose my rights to build a deck because I knocked down the existing deck?
No, I don't think so. What do you think?
No, no.
Loss of right to build a deck.
But that's not, that's, that's what I'm trying to say with the con, with the uh vertical expansion. That would be allowed as long as you kept the deck, but for the, any required setbacks, but this twenty five foot distance to mean high water is, is like an additional buffer. It's not truly the, it's, it's treated differently. It's not, it's not your rear setback. It's a, it's a.
Well, I think, I think this, this is a little, little peculiar because you have a seawall. You don't have a sandy beach.
Nope.
So there's a very definite water line. And uh with the seawall there, you're not looking at waves rolling up like we are in some parts of Royton where it's rolling right up the beach and toward the house.
There's also rocks, boulders in front of the seawall too.
So what I'm suggesting is, I need to look at this a little bit differently. Uh, it isn't something where I think we say grandfather because it's not grandfatherable, but we need to see how variable we can be in applying this particular stricter. And I think we have to get zoning commission involved in that so that we can make a reasonably good uh compromise with the applicant.
So Tim, if you ask the board to continue your item, to keep the public hearing open and continue the item to the next meeting, you don't have to renotice the neighbors, you don't have to reapply, you don't have to put up another sign later on. You have to keep the same one up you ha, you have now, but um, just something to consider.
Yeah, I, I just don't think, uh, from hearing the conversation tonight, I don't think they're gonna approve anything that's gonna be satisfactory. So I don't, I almost would rather have them deny it and get that out in the public record so then we can push forward this amendment. Because y, a lot of people in Harborview and along Shorefront Park and maybe not Shorefront Park, but there's other areas that'll definitely be adversely affected. And I think the realtors and people who are selling their homes, they should know.
So I, I don't have any way, I don't have any way of, of knowing, but I suppose my initial reaction is that one denial of a, a zoning appeal would not have an impact on what happens at this April meeting. I don't know if Tammy, you agree with that?
Continue this and.
I, I think it's way better, gents. I understand. I mean, I, I know, um, I know you're not seeing it that way, but we actually are wanting to be helpful. Um, we're just wanting to avoid setting a, a precedent that is a, let's just call it egregious precedent. Um, I wish I had a less strong word, but that's basically what uh Andy's saying, you know, that we can try to work things out. It's not that we are.
Well, continuation was, is the really simple way to do it.
It is the simple.
You just, it just puts you in, in suspension until we get to the next meeting.
And if all stars.
Deny it without prejudice, and that allows you to resubmit, even though we denied it, without having to wait six months.
I, I think that's, I think that's the right, I think that's the right move. I think we should continue the meeting.
We'll just continue it. But in the meantime, I think we gotta make people aware of this, for sure.
And it would be, it would be, uh, like, I don't know who we need to speak to over there, but if, if you want to get more guidance on what you feel like is gonna be allowable or anything, I don't know who to talk to, to get that language together, because we'll go say like, yeah, it's gonna be twenty feet, it's gonna be nineteen feet, it's gonna be twenty one feet, whatever it has to be, and that way, you know, we can have a plan that makes sense, but I don't want to lose the footprint by saying, let's just deny this and.
All right, so Tim, your house is next door. Kevin, we're talking about your house.
Yeah, I'll grant him a variance to come, well, I will, I'll grant, I won't oppose him.
You, you will not oppose a variance if you had to shift it toward your property.
Hundred percent, we're not opposing.
Okay.
No.
So maybe that's part of the solution. Anyway, uh, I think continuation is appropriate.
Okay. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Well, we appreciate the discussion with you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Right. Um, we agreed. You wanna put it up to a quick vote? Um, I'm both that we have a continuation of this item to the next meeting.
And I'll second that.
Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, great. It's done.
So that'll be April seventeenth, Tim and Kevin.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Make sure they know the date that, that we're talking about in terms of when we.
For the P and Z commission, I believe it's gonna be.
They don't have to pay anything. They don't really have to do anything, but they should know that date, you know?
Yeah, we pay a price. Thank you.
Surely. Um, moving on, Lee, what's next? Oh, no, Steve is doing it. I forgot.
That's right. Give me one second. I'm, I'm looking right now, trying to get my, uh, my agenda up here.
Tim, I think you're still connected.
Yeah, just close Zoom and then.
Give me one second. It's, it's a slow load.
You guys sitting next to each other at the dining room table?
I put him on mute. I can unmute.
So we can't hear all the nasty things you say?
Right now, we had board action on A. We did that, right?
We did that.
And administrative actions, action on hearing minutes, December nineteenth, twenty twenty four, and January sixteenth, twenty twenty five.
Let me get my copies.
Okay.
And Tammy, one other item you gotta do is you gotta talk to MIS about the really crappy response we had trying to get onto Zoom. So which one first, Steve?
Uh, we're looking to put an action on the hearings, on the minutes. Have you had a chance to review the December nineteenth?
Uh huh.
Twenty twenty four and a January sixteen, twenty twenty five?
Yeah, anybody have any changes that they would like to see in the December minutes?
I didn't find anything.
Not present.
Excuse me?
I'm just saying I wasn't at that meeting, so I can't come.
Right.
So, so we'll make a note that Keith Line was, uh.
Keith, you were at the, this, you were at the, this is the December minutes.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Time flies.
Getting things backwards.
Yeah.
Now, let me just.
So we had Lee, Andy, Ben, Kathy, Danielle, and Keith at that meeting.
All right, um. I vote to approve the minutes.
Approve. Second?
All right, all in favor, say aye.
I abstain. I was not there.
All right, good. Um, so everybody but Steve is an aye and Steve abstained.
January sixteen, twenty twenty five, the minutes?
I didn't have any objections.
We're talking January sixteenth, right?
Yes.
Yes.
I didn't either. I mean, there's, no, hey, it's just a list of what was covered.
Yeah.
What's, what's to object to?
So I'll make a motion to approve those minutes?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
And so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Keith, did you miss that meeting?
That's not the one, that's the one I was not at.
Okay. All right, I thought you were there. Anyway, then, do we have any other administrative information? We have a class coming up on Saturday. I'm attending. Who else is attending?
I'm attending.
I went to that class already, the commissioner training April for April, correct, Tammy? I don't have to go to that one, correct?
Um, it's, these aren't, these aren't have tos. You're in compliance. These are just additional opportunities.
Cuz it says it's April eleventh on the Friday.
That's another one. There, there is one this Saturday. There's, there's been a push and a call across Connecticut to really try to provide uh tools to all the land use um commissioners and boards.
The one on Saturday is like the one we just had from our corporation council, expanded greatly.
How long is this? How, how long is this training for?
It's all day. It's like nine to four thirty. Nine to four thirty. I don't even, they, last time they were supposed to stop for lunch and didn't, as I recall.
Yes. Yes. Okay.
But anyway, Lee and I are going.
I can't do it this Saturday, no.
Yeah, this, you, you had to pre-register for this Saturday, but that opportunity in, in April, on uh, April eleventh, Friday, that's an in-person one. Um, and if, if you'd like to attend, just let us know and um, we'll register.
I'm thinking about it. It's in Hattam. And Hattam is, is up past New Haven. If you go back on fifteen, you can cross over to Hattam. I just don't know where in Hattam it is. Hattam's not that small. So, you know, I'd like to know. Isn't Hattam right on the river? I thought it was.
It's right on the river, yes.
So I, I'm thinking about that one cuz it's a practical thing, and the more practical knowledge I have, the better. I don't think Lee needs to go to this. It's how to read site plan. With practical explanation.
Well, that's good. Uh, it saves me the trouble of driving to Hattam.
Yeah, it, it saves me having to ask you every time what the hell the site plan is all about.
Well, I bet I can, you know, provide some expertise.
More expertise is better. So I'm thinking about it, but I'm not committed as yet. I would recommend it if you want your land use knowledge expanded. And that's getting us, I, we don't have any education issues with the current board, right? And we're set?
That's, that's right.
Good. Anybody have anything further? Do you want to scold me over anything?
No, I just, I just wanna add, I just wanna add something. I was appointed as a fire commissioner a couple of weeks ago. It, the, the schedule will not impact this board, so I'm happy to continue to serve.
That's good.
Um, you know, I, I, uh, I, I feel like I can add some value from the, from the fireside with this board, so if there's anything I could add to that, to give you a compliment of some, some way, let me know. I served on planning and zoning before. So I'm seeing the wrath be bounced back to them. I'm curious to see what that comes back with next uh month. But um, I'm uh happy and uh to share some, the latest and greatest with the fire department with, with the board as needed.
Good. Great. Yeah. So Steve, what position have you just?
Fire commissioner.
Oh, great.
Get a red hat with that, Steve?
No, just my Tuesdays, three to five, once a month. It's hard to say no, Tammy. I don't know why. I just love this city, you know?
I'm glad. Um, so for the April meeting with the continuation of this item, we're gonna be packed. We're gonna have four items.
Yeah, well, we'll put this item first, but I don't want, I don't want to go around the mulberry bush fifty five times with somebody that doesn't want to work with us. So I, I will push for a quicker decision, once we have more information on the zoning commission and some indication from the applicant that they're willing to what, do what we suggested. Lee suggested is when it just slide it to the left and we give you a variance. Lee suggested is when it just slide it to the left and we give you a variance to go into the side setback. Um, I know that's not enough. We could cut into the twenty five feet by a couple of feet, but I don't want to make a habit of ignoring the twenty five feet. I think that's really not our job.
I, I believe that with a little creativity, they could have a very interesting deck.
They could. We've had them here in Royton where we've opened all kinds of dishes and.
Oh, yeah.
We have diagonal decks.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, a clever design can solve a lot of problems.
But the other thing that they gotta contend with that I saw right away, looking at their plans, was the stairway.
Pace of innovation being changed.
Have to go way out to the outer edge of the deck because they have three levels that you're going up. Um, you'd almost have to stick it out further, bend it back into you. Um, you might have an intermediate level out there. I don't know. That's, I think, I think it gets a lot harder than we think it is when you include.
Oh, I, I see it. I mean, when, uh, we first looked at the, with the existing, you know, deck shown, it's like, okay, where are the stairs going?
Yeah, yeah. And your, your comment about the stairs being on the other side. Is there not enough room between the two houses? What's going on there?
No, I don't think there is.
No, okay. Right. So, for anybody that has another item?
No, but I'll make a motion that we adjourn the hearing for tonight.
Mm-hmm. Anybody second?
Sure.
Second.
Yeah, hey, all in favor? Hi, thank you all. Appreciate you being here. We'll talk tomorrow.
Thank you.
Hey, good night. Good night, everyone.
Happy spring.
Good night.